Good afternoon, everybody. On behalf of the Town of Silver City and the Town Council, I'm calling this work session of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following out the salute to the New Mexico State flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico to be a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Thank you, and I'd like to welcome everybody here this afternoon. Does any council member want to make changes to the agenda? No changes? So at this point, we'll turn the time over to the Planning and Zoning Commission to present, or to whoever's gonna do it, present the strategic plan. Director Jackie?
Delegation.
Thank you, council. Thank you, commission. Here we have Site Southwest. Allison has been working with us through the Housing Strategic Plan for about the last four or five months or so. They did a site visit down whenever we had those stakeholder roundtables regarding the Land Use Code as well as the Housing Strategic Plan. And they have presented you with a draft of kind of what they have gotten so far. So they're going to present some of this information, and then we'll be open to comment from you all. Allison, if you're ready.
Allison, you can go ahead and present. We can't. Okay, okay.
Thanks, Randy. We can't, we can't actually hear Jackie, really.
Yeah, whoever was talking before was really hard to hear.
Okay, yeah, you guys are, you guys are good to present.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Can everyone see the screen? I can't actually see if people are waving or nodding. Okay, I see a hand going up and down, so I think that's good.
Okay. Awesome. All right, well, thanks, everyone, for having us. I think I've, and sorry, I can't see your faces right now, but I think I've met a few of you out there in the crowd. My name's Allison Long. I'm a senior planner with Site Southwest.
My name's Carlos Gamora. I am also a senior planner with Site Southwest. Yeah, Allison, do you want to go to the next slide? So we're gonna talk about the housing plan a bit today and what we're doing. I think something important just about context before I pass it over to Allison. The important thing is that for the housing plan, it establishes compliance with the New Mexico Affordable Housing Act. And so that's kind of the purpose of this, is that this and the accompanying ordinance, it unlocks a toolbox that you're able to use. But something important about that is providing guidance. It's not legal policies. So when we're talking about potential strategies, potential, potential goals, things like that, we're doing that from kind of a technical strategic perspective. It's not any kind of thing saying you're committing to this. It's not an expectation that you're actually going to do this. How the plans work is that we're providing, you know, technical data, providing some narrative around how to interpret that data, and then providing suggestions. Those are suggestions that based on our kind of understanding of other entities on the stage, but then also working with you all what kinds of, what kinds of strategies might be interesting, might be worth pursuing, might be, the community might be interested in, in kind of investigating. But again, I don't want it to seem like the strategies that we're putting out have cleared, you know, any kind of political hurdles, any kind of funding hurdles. It's just kind of looking at those as these, these technical recommendations. In the plan, once Allison starts talking about this, but in the plan, what we have is we have some existing conditions. And so we're looking at the community and housing profile. So thinking about what the population is, thinking about the existing housing is. From that, we put together some analysis. So we start looking at how we're understanding housing needs and how we're understanding existing barriers to building or developing the kinds of housing could assist the community. A lot of this stuff is fairly formulaic in how we have to use different kinds of terms, but still really want to get opinions, especially from council, from Planning and Zoning Commission, from other community stakeholders, understanding how we want to phrase these and how we want to work with these. But where we're really, where we're able to have a lot more input is this kind of end part, is thinking about the goals and recommendations. And so some of this strategy with this, I mentioned before, a little bit of a toolbox kind of strategy. With that, we want as many tools as we can within a toolbox. But then we also want to provide a little bit of strategic guidance on what are the things that might be most strategic, that might be most feasible, that might be most appetizing for the community. But that's, that's kind of how a lot of these plans work. So just think about that a little bit as we get into. Any, any quick questions before Allison starts to jump into the actual plan content? All right, I don't see anything. I also can't really see very well. But yeah, if there are, if there are questions, we'll jump into that.
Yeah, thanks, Carlos. So just for this presentation, oh, Carlos, I'll have Carlos give a brief update on where the Land Development Code project is. That's coming down the pipe. And then really, like he mentioned, we'll get into the housing plan, go over some national and regional trends that informed the plan, show you what user, so what type of people are we trying to target with these strategies? And then kind of what is the next step for council with this plan? Actually, did you want to give a quick update on the Land Development Code?
Yeah, so Land Development Code. So, so we're starting to work with planning and zoning on the Land Development Code. We'll be coming, I believe we're coming to council in, I think it might be two weeks. I have to look at Jackie for that. But I think we're going to be council in two weeks to start talking about some of the scope for that. The PNC has been working a lot on, on ways to become adjusted in the Land Development Code. So we're getting Jane working with them on some possibilities and certain engaging council figuring out what we think has, you know, local feasibility. Because that idea is actually going to be the policy document changing how zoning and land development work in the future. The idea is that, once we get the housing plan in place, kind of figure out what the needs are, what some of the barriers are, then we should start addressing that through the Land Development Code process. And that process, we're expecting to take, at least so far, I'd like it to go as quick as possible. But how COVID pays work when we're, when we're doing this, sometimes it just starts to get really extended and drawn out. So we'll try to work as quickly as possible on that. But that is something that we'll, we'll be bringing with us.
Thanks, Carlos. Yeah, so these two, the two plans work together. So I would, I would say the housing plan process is about seventy-five percent complete. Oh, this little arrow is actually supposed to be on internal review, but we've already done data gathering, public outreach. We've published an employer survey. We've been doing stakeholder interviews. We're actually now at internal review. So I have folks from PNC and other organizations have been providing comments that I've been reviewing. Once we kind of get them consolidated internally, we do want to publish the plan as a draft for the, for anyone to review and place comments on. We have a software that allows people to do that on a computer or their phone. And then we'll go through one last round of consolidation and incorporation of comments. Of course, that will be talking to staff and making sure that what's in the plan is still lining up with the comments that we've received. And then we can move on to adoption. And then, yeah, like Carlos said, this plan is really about a toolkit. And then really, the Land Use and Zoning Plan will be that policy document. So I'm gonna briefly go through some national housing trends. I don't think this will surprise anyone. But this is kind of the forces that are taking place around the country that are impacting Silver City. So there has been a lack of entry-level home construction, specifically since the Great Recession. In general, there's a slowdown in home construction. And this has resulted in a nationwide shortage of housing. It has also resulted in a lack of variety or different types of housing. As building housing has gotten more expensive and riskier for developers, they're doing less and less different types of housing. They want to stick with what they know has a good track record. Other big trends are that, we know rent has increased four times since nineteen eighty. Wages have increased, but not at the same rate. And then if you really look at the price of homes, that has really skyrocketed since nineteen eighty. So that would be like five and a half times since nineteen eighty. And then what, how do these trends play out? Specifically, in Silver City and Grant County, I think is also important because of the context. For your city is that it's rural, it's in New Mexico. So these, these trends do play out a little differently. Specifically, though, we know that vacancy rates have been going down for rentals and homes since the early two thousands. But in Silver City specifically, the rental vacancy rate is really, really low. So the rental market in Silver City is super tight, very difficult for renters to find housing. If we look at the homeowner vacancy rate, it's actually not as bad as the rest of the US. So that's good for Silver City in comparison, but it still means that there's a shortage of housing. All right, a couple more local trends. We know Silver City and Grant County have a slow, slowly moderate population decline. Housing volumes in general are just a little lower in Silver City than in comparison to the county, the state in the US. Silver City has old housing. That makes sense. Silver City's been around a long time. But really, the number is correct stark. Eighty-five percent of housing was built before nineteen eighty-nine. That's pretty different than other geographies. And then also, Silver City does have a higher proportion of low-income residents in compared to the county, state, and US. And so that, that will affect what type of housing can be built, what can be bought, what can be rented. So it is really important to look at that local population for those metrics. And then one key piece of information that became increasingly apparent as we did our site visits and as we talked to, and we did our roundtables in Silver City is that vacancy isn't an issue, but the vacancy is complicated. And so when you dive into the census data, they chop up vacant units in a variety of ways. So you can chop up that, that number to be, is it vacant, but is it for rent? Is it vacant, is it rented, but not occupied? Is it for sale? Is it sold? Is it not occupied? Is it seasonal? I think those top four categories there, those would be not of a big concern, right? That's, that's vacant units that are actively attempting to be rented, attempting to be used. They have a purpose. What we are concerned about is this other category that's called other vacant. And this means is a unit that doesn't fall into those categories. And specifically, these are units that are often units that have become vacant as a result of disrepair. And so they can't be rented, they can't be sold. They're kind of just sitting there. That status hasn't changed for that unit in a long time. And so I think what's also important to know is in Silver City, this chart on the right is just for Silver City. And it's showing that that, that of those vacant units, a higher and higher proportion of them are just that catch-all category that means they're just not being used actively. And that is a concern that we would hope to address in the housing plan as well. Oh, did someone have a question?
I don't know if it's just me, but could you tell us what page you're on?
So those are kind of the big trends, just holding your mind as we're kind of walking through what we heard.
The mayor was asking if you could refer to a specific page on the draft that was sent, so they can kind of follow along.
I do not know the specific page. I do know that most of the census data is in the back in the portion called a community profile. But I'm sorry, I don't actually have like the plan in front of me right now. A little bit about what we heard from the public engagement. And so this was directed through our roundtables or interviews. We heard that the median home price on the market is above what residents can pay and that developers can sell currently. Seniors are interested in aging in place, but specifically in downsized housing. But that doesn't necessarily exist. Employers have trouble attracting and hiring employees due to a lack of housing choice or, or really availability. So maybe someone does want to move to Silver City. They have a job lined up, but they can't find the housing that they want. Specifically, high cost of construction in rural areas, this is due to all the factors combining, such as material shortages, long wait times, bad for state inspections. This, this last one is that housing rehabilitation money is difficult to use. So maybe there are grants out there. Maybe there is federal funding out there for housing rehabilitation. But a lot of times, the building has to be up to local codes first before federal dollars can be used to do further rehabilitation. So that's a real limitation. Kind of going back to the older housing in Silver City contributes to this. And then lastly, we heard a lot of interest in alternate housing models. And so from the community. And so an example would be resident-owned housing for mobile home communities. A lot of times, those residents rent the, the land under their unit. And so technically, they are a little insecure in knowing if that's, if that's a long-term situation. It's not fully in their control, but there, but there's other models that would allow them to own the land below their unit. And so that's an example of sort of an alternate model that we heard some support for. All right, so when we were looking at strategies to create for the housing plan, we're kind of creating strategies in two buckets. The one bucket is can that person afford market-rate housing? The second bucket would be, hmm, they're not very likely to be able to afford market-rate housing. And so your strategies look different, right? Market-rate housing means it's probably more of a supply issue. Whereas if you can't afford market-rate housing, you're gonna need some sort of subsidy to help that person afford housing at all. So in the market-rate housing bucket, we heard that there are employees and retirees who want to, or I should say, potential employees or potential retirees who want to live in Silver City, but can't find the housing that they would like in order to make that decision. We heard there's renters who want to own homes, right? Maybe they're not renting because that's their first option. And then there's a lot of people who commute to Silver City for work, sometimes really long commutes. And so while a lot of those people might choose to live in the county on purpose, there might be a portion of those people who might prefer to live closer to work in any way, though. Their, if they're income can afford housing or not. Now, if we look at the bucket of folks who would need some sort of subsidy, they can't afford that market-rate housing, this is kind of a wider variety of people. So it would be cost burdened renters or homeowners. And being cost burdened means that you aren't using, you're spending thirty percent or more of your monthly income on housing. So they're probably not doing that on purpose. You're probably doing that because you have to. And so that's what considers a person cost burdened. There are people living in housing in need of rehabilitation or repairs. They probably can't afford those repairs, but they would probably like them. There's some housing without basic necessities. And so what we mean by that is there's some housing that doesn't have, like, modern heating. It just has, only has wood heating. Some of them don't have plumbing. So really looking at why are people living in housing like that? Is it by choice or by necessity? There are people who have threatened housing, there are no housing. And so you can think of threatened housing as people in relationships where they're experiencing domestic abuse, or maybe they are homeless. And so they're not likely to be able to afford market-rate housing. We have folks with disabilities or on disability. And so they also might, we, we think of that as a special population where you need like just a different type of housing. It just has different needs for what the housing might look like. And there's not always enough of that particular kind of housing. Same for seniors living alone. Going back to, we heard a lot of seniors do want to downsize in aging place. There's often not enough housing of that size. And then also, single mother households who are experiencing poverty, just a vulnerable population that isn't likely to be able to afford current market-rate housing. So if you've had a chance to look at this plan, these are the buckets that the strategies fall into. I am gonna pause here. I don't have them all built out in the presentation because I didn't want to, this is taking too, too long. But under each bucket, there's probably a dozen strategies each. And so they are arranged in order of priority. So number one, just new housing and a diversity of new housing. I think we heard that loud and clear. I think that's obvious to anyone who lives or works in Silver City. And then how's that gonna happen is the zoning and land use code reform. And so the housing plan, once again, we're thinking of as a toolkit, we are listing zoning and land use code reform as a very high priority, high bang-for-your-buck housing strategy. We aren't gonna go into those details, but we are saying the housing plan would look at issues that fall into that bucket as a way to create more affordable housing. And then kind of like we mentioned, the vacant properties, older housing that needs rehab or repair. Silver City also has some opportunities for public or private development or redevelopment projects of older buildings, maybe that aren't in their original use yet. And then another key strategy would be building some internal staff capacity for community development. And that looks like maybe some more staff, maybe offering different programs at the city level that can't be offered right now. But looking forward, if you had more staff, what, what are the options there? They mentioned that different ownership models for housing. And then lastly, we did hear, hey, right now, there's not a great one-stop shop for community resources in terms of a website that kind of brings together what the city's doing, what the housing authority's doing, what nonprofits are doing, what the COG is aware of, you know, what different mortgage products are out there that the real estate community might actually be most familiar with. How can we bring these all together to help the Silver City community understand what are the options it has for help or services or advice? And everything related to finding housing and help for affording housing. So I am gonna stop there and pause for any, any comments so far? Or if you've had any comments on the housing plan that you would like to discuss?
Counselor, come on.
I have two questions. First of all, you talked about stakeholder, stakeholders that are reviewing this ahead of time besides the planning and zoning commission?
We can't, we can't get into some of the details of the housing plan strategies if it's helpful.
Okay, I don't know if you can't hear me?
Make sure that the, the general strategies here are things that, you know, council's looking at and, and kind of, and at least gain a possibility that there's could be strategies that are pursued. Is okay to have strategies on here? Or you say not likely to happen, either from a political perspective or a manager perspective?
Okay.
That's okay.
Maybe I should run this off, right?
But you do want to make sure that there's at least, there's at least some kind of insistencies and kind of local feasibility there.
All right, hello, are you, can you hear me? Okay, you can hear me now. I'm Counselor Kano. I have two questions for you. Okay, the first one is you mentioned stakeholders that are reviewing this before, before the council gets it?
That is other than the Planning and Zoning Commission? And I would like to have a list of who those stakeholders are. I'm really concerned about diversity and making sure we're reaching everyone in the community and not the same people always.
The other thing I wanted to see if I can get a copy of is you say you have twelve strategies per bucket. It would be nice to see those strategies before you want us to approve them, so that we know what they are.
And I also have a question about something in the, what you gave us. I think it might be an error that needs to be corrected, but it's a pretty big one. So on page twenty-nine, it says from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, Silver City is popul, Silver City's population decreased by forty-six percent. That doesn't seem accurate for one year, especially since, yeah. So if we could get that corrected, just because it's probably wrong, I would assume. Oh, and then, I don't know if they're gonna answer me. Oh, you have to turn off that mic. Oh, yeah, he's, he's got it. It should work now.
Your first question about who has it been distributed to? I'll let Jackie chime in, but I believe it's just community development, PNC, and Priscilla Lucero with the COG and the councilors at this point.
Uh, the councilors haven't gotten it?
Internal staff, it isn't going to the public yet, but Jackie chime in if I'm, if I'm missing anyone.
Hello, Mayor, Counselor Kano. So Counselor Snyder and Counselor Prince, how?
But yes, I hear what you're saying about making sure, when we release it publicly, that we are, are making sure to cast a wide net and, and not just getting the typical people who respond to sort of city planning outreach. And so I think, yeah, we'll, we'll work with community development to make sure our email list is as robust as possible. We have all the emails from the roundtables that really represented quite a diverse group of organizations throughout the community, from nonprofits to state to schools to residents. But we can certainly revisit that with community development and make sure that's still the best list possible before we do our public outreach. And then as for all the different strategies, it was my understanding that this was shared with council. So I'm sorry, I didn't elaborate on the strategies in this presentation. I didn't want to make you read the whole document from a PowerPoint. So if you haven't had time to review that yet, we can, we can always continue to get input from you all in a different way as well.
And Mayor and council, the strategies are on page twenty-three.
And yes, we, well, fixing the population, that was incorrect.
Yes, except for the last one. Are they, is that, or are they gonna correct it?
Did council get, get the document, the draft document that had? So, so like underneath, like building housing and diversity of new housing, there's things around modular tractored homes. There's things around need use restrictions, town support for affordable housing development programs. Did, did, did council get that document?
What page is it? Twenty-three.
She didn't answer my last, my last question.
Either.
And, like, can you tell me about twenty-eight, twenty-nine? And, and can you tell me about 28, 29? Sorry, which, what was on page 29?
I'm 29, I'm 29, it's from 2019, 2019 to 2020.
Silver City's population decreased 46%. That seems like an error.
Yeah, no, I said I have corrected, we have a different version of this plan that earlier has that chart, where I used, I looked at a different census data source. So correct that error. That is incorrect, it has been corrected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor member have a question, Counselor Prince?
Allison, Halle Crayos, I just also wanted to reiterate just some of the concerns as far as the population data. Just the graph that we're looking at on 29 from 2010 to 2020. It's been always just a challenge just to imagine how well the census was able to function in 2020. And there are conflicting data sources that we have when it comes to our water connection numbers. I'm not totally convinced that our population has declined yet. I also know that where we get that information from is a little distorted. There's other ones, and I'll send you a communication through ComDev on this. But just the other big one I wanted to make sure on, just on the introduction and background.
Hold on a minute, Counselor Prince. Randy, we're getting feedback from all these other units as well as?
I'm sorry, Mayor, it's just a technical difficulty, because they can't hear you when you use the microphone.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Prince.
No worries, sorry, we're just dealing with some of the fun techniques over here. I also just wanted to, on page three over there, town of Silver City was founded in 1878, not 1876. Otherwise then, just small questions, all direct through community development. Thank you.
Okay, sure, and yeah, the platform we have, it will allow you to comment in the document exactly in the location where you have your comments, and so I'm hoping that's a really easy avenue for people to provide comments as well, so we'll make sure you get that link.
The link was provided in the emails that were sent out initially with the housing plan? So you can click on that link and it should be to get you to the workable document.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Prince, was there any other questions from the council?
Maybe I did this over the, I noticed on page seven, table two is the same as table three.
Table, did you ask them or chat?
Mayor, Counselor Snyder, I want to take a question, please.
I see, I see, page seven, table two is the same as table three.
Okay. I will look at that. Yeah, I would say for the purposes of today, that, yeah, like Carlos was saying, that the slide that's up right now is where we could definitely use your input, your opinions that this is the right direction, if it feels like anything is missing than you would expect to see. But we have one more slide where we're gonna talk about exactly where council, your guys will be super laser focused, but right now, this is the general direction we're going. So, in the end.
So, Counselor Kano again, and I just wanna say, I know you're trying to tell us not to tell you what's wrong with this, but we're not gonna approve this until it's correct. So I think it's important for you to hear from each one of us when we find things that need to be fixed, whether it's today or we have another meeting or whatever, but I don't appreciate being told that these things aren't important when they really are.
And, and sorry, Counselor, I don't think that's the intention. This is a rough draft document, we haven't released it to the public yet. We want to refine it, we want to get comments, we wanna get the public's comments, we wanna change this. We're not looking at actually approving this for, I wanna say, two months. The idea is really that we wanted to start sharing with council, just some ideas. So, so yes, I think, I think getting comments, yeah, I'm looking at page seven right now, you're correct. Table two is the same as table three. We're not asking council to approve those, we're not asking council to approve these strategies right here. We're not asking council to approve the detailed strategies. What we wanted to do is, we wanted to start providing these strategies just to figure out, are these the kinds of things that we can share with the public? What we don't wanna do is, we don't wanna say something like rehabilitation or repairable housing. This is bullet number four, right? So we don't wanna say, hey, we're thinking about, bullet number four, rehabilitation or repairable housing. And then council's like, no, like, we don't, we're not, we're not even interested in asking the public that kind of question. Like, that's, that's poorly phrased, we don't wanna get into that thing yet. And so that's, that's what we're trying to, we're trying to kind of focus on. Are these kinds of strategies, is this kind of trend, the kind of thing that you're looking for? But yeah, absolutely, we do wanna hear what still needs to change in the document. We're still going through the document, we're still updating tables. I think the things with the wrong tables, the things where we've got improper data, absolutely, those are things that we wanna be fixing over the next couple of months. Yeah, so we are, we are open to that, but we especially wanna make sure that we're also understanding whether these strategies are kind of the right direction that we're going, and whether we can start sharing the general strategies with the public as we're improving the document. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yes, I have another question on, on page 19, the table 12, it's talking about rents. Are those rents including utilities, or are they just actual rent?
I believe it is just the rent, I can go back and look at that census definition for you though.
Appreciate it. And then one other, and one other question, I haven't seen anything in this document. I, is there any, are we getting up with some sources for like funding or for supplemental income for housing or anything, or is it just gonna be the document itself?
One thing we have as an appendix is Housing New Mexico has a really good compendium of sources. And so we are gonna include that as an appendix. And if that doesn't include any funding that's pretty common, especially to use in rural cities, we will include it separately as well.
Good, thank you.
Counselor, I think to your question, the funding, some jurisdictions already have funding, some jurisdictions are seeking funding. This document isn't the same as a grant application, so it doesn't, it doesn't come with funding. It's not like when we pass the plan, the state is giving out, you know, several million dollars. I wish that was the case. What this, I mean, what the housing plan does is, again, it's providing compliance, but then there would need to be some other kind of sources of funding. And then Allison's just talking about how we can list different, list different funding opportunities, but neither funding nor implementation of different programs is part of the plan, if that makes sense.
Counselor Ben Como, do you have a question or comment?
Well, I don't have a question, I just wanna make a comment. I wanna thank you for putting this stuff together. I think we are, we're all aware that there is a housing shortage here in New Mexico nationwide, and I know this took a lot of effort and time, and we've always heard that this has been a problem here, but after reading a lot of this material, I was just kind of blown away just how severe and problems that we have, especially, I think I was mentioning to Randy earlier, the, the lack of housing or single moms just trying to make it, raising kids. I think we need to, I think this is a good starting point, and I just wanna thank you for putting it together.
I have a question. How do you, what is your source for rental prices? How do you go about collecting that information?
So some of this data is from the census, and then there is also a market data portion. So we did want to, to your point, especially in small rural communities, the census data isn't as accurate. And so we also got market data to sort of ground truth it. And there's a market data section where Zillow and a couple other sources, they have their own data tracking. So they're, they're tracking their own postings and listings. I believe the average home listing on, just on, in online research was very similar to the census. I wanna say the census rents were a little low compared to market rents.
What is your margin of error? Is there like a plus or minus to those numbers?
For the census data, yes, I would have to look that up, and it would change for every metric, basically. Is how the census reports that.
Thank you. Counselor Prince?
I was just wanting to double check in also on the data sources that we were looking at here. I noticed that we were able to get some information from the Silver City Realtors Association and the National R and R as well. Does this factor into any of the numbers that we have for rent, or is that primarily just gonna be for homeownership?
I know that's in the market data section, and so if rent was not included there, it wasn't available.
And then I just wanted to make sure to bring to the council's attention what we see on page 29, I believe. I'm so sorry. I was just looking at what we're looking at for the strategic numbers, and we might still be too early on right now, but I was hoping to see if it'd be possible to get, just to read out what we're looking at for potential needs for new housing, sorry, 21, Silver City housing targets. For the numbers that we're looking at with this one over here, for purchase, entry and affordable, 735 units gap, and for rent, 775 unit gap, for mostly working and cost burdened families on that, with a total of, total of new units, which we could do through the different strategies, talked about 2,069 units. How does that scale by what you guys have as expertise, and just if you could comment on that for a moment?
When you say how does that scale, do you mean how does it compare to other communities or?
Well, you know, we don't have numbers as far as new units needed for other communities like Santa Fe, Bredoso, folks that we've got in Taos or, or any of the other communities that we're looking around. Yeah, I was wondering just, how is that comparing across the rest of the state for what your experience is?
I'd say just from my, from my personal opinion, thinking about that, I think that is pretty high. I think that proportion is quite high, and that's, that's also where, when we were looking at vacancy rate, and again, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to know exactly, you know, what the, I think another counselor was asking about margin of error. The difficulty is margin of error when we're, when we're working with census data and we're working with small data sets. It is really hard to know what that, what that margin of error is. But, but when we're looking especially at rental vacancy rates, it is so incredibly low there. I'm not sure whether that is small data set, or whether that is just, you know, a really large problem that we're dealing with. That's where some of the anecdote data does come in, and that is again where, you know, we can present some of this data, but, but we are, we are quite interested in hearing, you know, how ground truth this kind of stuff is. But to get to your, to get to your question, I think that, I think we are seeing quite a strong need in Silver City for a variety of different kind of housing types. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
It does, and you know, from the vacancy rate we were looking at with the community profile data, 1.6% for Silver City, 6.6% nationally. I can think of other communities that we get a chance to talk with. Do you have any numbers off the top of your head, how does our vacancy rate compare to communities like Santa Fe, like Taos?
Yeah, Taos, Taos, Los Alamos, Santa Fe, I've done housing plans for them. Rental vacancy rate typically, when you're looking at less than a 5% vacancy rate, 5% for rental is effectively zero. So when you're looking at less than a 5% rental vacancy rate, that's again where I feel like it's kind of hard to know, it's kind of hard to know how accurate that is, especially with a small data set. But it being below the 5%, that is, that is a really worrying number. That tends to be where we see a lot of quite significant, very serious problems with rental units, with prices, with the ability for people to stay there, with predatory, predatory techniques. So, so yeah, I think anything less than that 5% is quite, quite serious. Albuquerque is probably somewhere around 6%, and that's still a pretty, pretty big issue. But Santa Fe and Los Alamos and Taos are generally, generally thought to be around 5% or a little less than 5%. But yeah, to get a comparison, again, it's either, it's either quite bad or the data's kind of wonky and it's the best that we have, and it's still, it's still a pretty serious situation.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Thank y'all very much, and I wanna thank the, the, I wanna thank the Chair Wheaton Smith and members of the P and Z Commission, and members of the Silver City staff who's worked on this project for a long time, and it looks like we're gonna be working on it some more, and I appreciate all the questions the council has asked, and I think Counselor Ben Como was right, it's a good beginning. Thank you. This concludes the item on the agenda. Are there any, any final questions or comments?
Sorry, I did actually have one more proposition for the council to be thinking about and not, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but yeah, I have this last thing that I wanted to present on today, if we still have some time. And sorry, I can't see, see your faces right now, but. From you guys, this is just introducing the concept. So behind like Carlos mentioned at the beginning, New Mexico housing plans enable you to have a lot of strategies. And New Mexico enables affordable housing to be defined up to 150% AMI, which is, sorry, median family income. And so this chart here shows you what the salaries are for Silver City. So the state allows that to, you to define affordable housing for families that make up to 107,850. That's quite a high salary, but the state wants you to have your toolbox wide open, right? They want you, the localities, to have the options at your fingertips. The next question for Silver City is, do you wanna redefine that priority for Silver City? And if we go back to this slide, do we want to come up with a different income threshold for the strategies for Silver City? Do we wanna leave it up to the state definition? And so that's something that we will continue getting your feedback on. But that's the next thing that we hope to get council's input on, is will your definition of that, that income threshold be different or the same as the state? And Carlos, I'd be curious if you have any observations of how other cities around New Mexico handle this question?
Yeah, and thank you, Allison. So, so Counselor, so to provide some context here too, so traditionally 80% AMI, so that's the percentage of the median income, right? So if we say that 100% AMI is what average household or family is making, 80% of that is what we typically define as being kind of a low income. That's still like a working class, there's still, you know, a lot of jobs and a lot of proportion is still within that 80%. But typically, housing subsidies and programs are provided for around that lower income. But typically, um uh housing subsidies and programs are provided for around that lower income, kind of eighty percent and below um of that median income. Um over the last couple decades, things have kind of moved towards um providing more kind of expanding services to median income households. So fifty percent of the population is eligible for then housing subsidies, um having a lot of those problems. Um and then especially in the higher cost communities, increasing that up to a hundred fifty percent AMI, which is a very, very high number. Again, it's more than what most um households make, and so considering that to be kind of uh eligible for affordable housing purchases. Um and so what what Allison is asking here is is that um Silver City can can either get more targeted in how it wants to provide um services and programs and um uh uh other kinds of strategies for housing, or it can keep it really broad. And so and so that's purely a question for for council, for the community, kind of figuring out, do we wanna have kind of a broad range of strategies that help both um kind of moderate and higher income households? Or do we wanna have kind of more focused strategies that are more uh focused on lower and kind of median moderate income? So kind of how we wanna be structuring those things, um it's just a question that uh that we'll want council to be thinking about over the next couple of months.
Is that additional information, or are there any comments or questions or advice for the?
Done, sorry for the last slide there.
Okay, well I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councillor Bencomo? Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're hereby adjourned.